2025 School Board Meeting. For those of you who don't know, I imagine most of you know. We end the school year calendar as of June 30th. So this is the last official School Board meeting, but there's a building and grounds meeting next weekend. But anyway, so I am calling this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, and it's a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district, and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as the news graphic in the Milwaukee Journal-Sentiment. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the great work of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go with the consent agenda. So with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on May 21st, 2025, the Budget and Finance Report, which includes a summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. Derosa, Director of Human Resources, provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening. This evening, we are seeking approval for the separation of the following employees: Professional staff Samantha Champion, Special Education Teacher at Webster, Julie Schleicher, Special Education Teacher at Webster, and Karen Steinke, who is retiring, has been our Special Education Coordinator for the past two years. Then we're seeking recommendation to approve the following contracts: Ashley Krumenauer, will be the new instructional coach at Westlon; Madison Lasiga, 3rd grade at Parkview; Morgan Muertos, Webster School Counselor; Mia Vincent, Special Education Teacher at Parkview; and Sierra McCollum, 6th grade ELA at Webster.
Thank you. Any discussion? Or I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Certainly.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Is it normal, looking at the classified and support staff? That is a really high number. Were any of those retirements, or were they rarities or resignations?
A mixed bay. If you'd like a detailed report, I could provide that to you on the next meeting.
That would be great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Then I'll take a vote on approving the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The vote to approve the consent agenda passed at 5-2-0.
All right. This evening, we have three topics we will be bringing to the board to report on. The first is the 2024-25 Students with Perfect Attendance. This year, we recognize Josh Maslick, who just graduated from CHS. Josh had perfect attendance for all four years of high school, which is just amazing. We also have Michael Wetstein, who was 11th grader at the high school; Claire Lilly, 9th grader at the high school; and Andy Arntz, a 5th grader at Borson. Congratulations to each of them. I would next like to recognize the Westlon Elementary School, its family, students, staff, and administration for being named by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction as 2023-24 Wisconsin School of Recognition, which highlights Westlon's commitment to student growth and achievement. Westlon was one of only six schools in the state to receive this award for excelling in two categories: Achievement and progress. This accolade serves as a testament to the hard work that the staff dedicates to supporting students every day. This distinction is based on a strict criteria, including academic performance, measurable growth in student achievement, and the reduction of achievement gaps. Congratulations, Katie Ramos, Westlon staff, students, and family. That was awesome. And finally, we have John Hamm, CHS Athletic Director, to share the CHS Spring Sport Recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I'm excited to share the outstanding accomplishments of our student athletes from the past spring sports season. Sorry. And before we get to the recognitions of our student athletes, just want to go over our participation numbers here. So this is something that we track annually here. So if you take a look, we have our total enrollment, and then we break it down because we're looking at extracurriculars. And you have our athletic participation, and you see that we have 57% of our students participate in at least one sport. And then you have our club participation, and you see that 67% of our students have participated in one club. So overall, we have 917 students participating in something. Okay? So we have 86% of our students doing something around CHS here. And over the last 15 years, we've been tracking this data. That's the highest percentage we've ever had, which we're very proud of. You know, we want our students engaged here. We have over 40 clubs. We have 27 our city programs here. So this is something that we pride ourselves on. You know, we look at this, and if our students are participating, that demonstrates that they're satisfied, that they're happy with the teams, the clubs that they're part of. And you know, the data shows that they're structured, they're part of something, that there's good outcomes, and there's good things only associated with that. So I wanted to share this with you. This is something that is very important to us within our athletic department because, you know, I'm about to get into some outcomes here. But this is something, if the students aren't part of it, we can't teach these life lessons, which are vital. And that's what our athletic department is all about. And before we get into that, we also have, you know, tracking participation here. So we look at, you know, what students are doing within athletics here. So, you know, our multi-sport athletes, we are down with multi-sport athletes. And I think we're all aware that our students are being pulled a lot of different directions. So this is something that isn't unique to us here, that all schools are facing this. So, you know, we've historically been over 200 two-sport athletes. Our three-sport is holding pretty steady, which is pretty rare. And then, you know, we have a couple students that are playing, you know, the same multiple sports in just one season, which is very rare, difficult to do. So now, the next thing I want to get into here, and we have another in the room, is the WIA has offered a student athlete leadership team. So this team is comprised of about 25 student athletes from around the state. So the WIA is made up of over 400 schools. Okay? So you have the qualifications that are outlined here. Over the last few years, we've had a number of students that have, you know, attempted to be part of this team. Okay? There's several interviewers. It's a process that you have to go through. And, you know, we're very proud that Macy Derosa will be representing CHS. And she's an outstanding student athlete, an outstanding person. And we're excited that she'll be going through this and to learn more about it, what it's all about. And it's very involved, and she's definitely the right person for it. So congrats to her and very proud of her. And now on to our accolades here. So first up, we have Boys Tennis. We have a first-team all-conference for Keenan Hawes and Eli Nats. Both of them also qualified for state. Keenan had an outstanding career, eclipsing 100 career victories. And continuing on with Boys Tennis, they were sectional runners-up. They almost qualified as a team for state, and some of you might have saw on our social media outlets here. For Boys Tennis, they were conference champions for the first time in school history, which was just really neat to celebrate. Great group of guys, great coaches here. And then on to baseball here. We have Colin Owers with second team. Elliot Wells was honorable mention. And Damon Von Steen was also honorable mention. Then girls across, we have first-team all-conference and Player of the Year was Delaney Miller. And then first team, Eddie Novak and Claire Kennison. And also first team was Melie Shaw and Zoe Sheik. Then Boys Golf, we have first team Owen Wood, who lost in a playoff and qualified for state. So he had a great season. And then girls soccer, who has just had a tremendous run. They've played so well that they were elevated to Division One. So first team all-conference and Player of the Year is Peyton Wetzel. And also first team is Courtney Van Ermen and Katie Vanenberg. Then joining them for first team is Micah Jalinski and Mia Hurd. And honorable mention is Hayden Rogan. And then track and field, we have for all-conference, we have Charlie McKenzie, Annika Otters, and Nora Schrader and Malia Burrell. And then on the boys' side, we have Ryan Severson and Ada McCoy. And Charlie McKenzie just had an incredible career. I'm sure most of us are aware of that. So she was a state champion in the 1600 meter and 800 meter. And then Ryan just had an outstanding end to his career. So he placed fourth in the 3200 meter, but also set a school record. And then placed sixth in the 1600 meter and also set a school record in that event. So just a great end to his career. And then Ada McCoy also qualified for state in the 400 meter. And then softball, they qualified for state. This was the fourth time in the last five years. So they've just been on an outstanding run. And first-team all-conference was Emily Johnson, Ashley Little Cavaliere, and Elliot Torbeck. And then there's a picture of the team. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you know how other schools, what their percentages with student participation? Because I think that 86% is, you know, really good.
I don't know the percentages. We do share, we meet monthly as athletic directors, and we share our athletic numbers of the total number of participants. And we are always in top one or two in the conference for that, but not the overall participation when you look at extracurriculars, the whole, when you also add exalts.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Currently, we have no one signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I have to read this? "Any district staff member, district resident, parent of a district student or student enrolled in the district may comment during the public comment portion of a meeting per Board Policy 167.3. For this meeting, the company may address the board during the public comment section of the meeting regarding topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comments are reminded that they are not immune from legal consequences related to their speech. This includes, but is not limited to, liability for speech that is contrary to the privacy, reputational, or due process rights of others, such as defamation or making false claims. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As this is a public meeting, it is expected that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves in a respectful and courteous manner that models appropriate behavior for our students. Speech or conduct that is threatening or disruptive is prohibited. In accordance with School Board Policy 167.3, comments by an individual speaker shall not exceed three minutes in duration. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state the topic upon which you will be commenting. If you are under the age of 18 or a student in Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be reported on the district's website." Abigail, do you have a timer? Oh, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gina Tozer. My address is N118W7362 Fairway Lane here in Cedarburg. And I will be talking about the proposed 2025-2026 budget, please. Members of the board, I'm speaking tonight as a CSD parent, a community member, and a taxpayer who cares about the long-term vision of our school district. I want to address the proposed budget specifically, line 27 on the originally presented itemized document at the last PNF meeting, which outlined the $500,000 goal for Funding Fund 46. I'd like to remind anyone that this goal is not universally popular. That aside, what concerns me is the instruction given by a member of the Personnel and Finance Committee to remove this line item, not because it's physically irresponsible, but because it's politically inconvenient. According to this member, the line item should be removed so that those who oppose earmarking funds for capital improvements, excuse me, will have a harder time identifying it in what will become the publicly available budget. That's not transparency, that's concealment. This same board member ran for reelection on a platform of pragmatism. Hiding a budget goal from public view because it might be controversial is not pragmatic, it's evasive. It undermines the trust the taxpayers place in this board to be open and accountable. To be clearer, a goal is not a mandate. Including it in the budget doesn't force us to spend the money. It simply signals that we are thinking ahead, doing our best to plan responsibly, and that we're willing to have honest conversations about our district's future. Removing it sends the opposite message, that we are unwilling to even acknowledge a long-term leak because it might be politically uncomfortable. I urge you to add this line item back into the itemized budget before it's finalized. Let's not shy away from difficult conversations. Let's lead with integrity, not avoidance. And let's show our community, especially our students, that we are not afraid to plan for the future, even when it's hard. Your constituents know that as a board, you can and should embrace opportunities for an engaged community to discuss any budget-related items within elected representatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments? I will jump into recommendations. This evening, we will be presenting eight recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025-26 preliminary budget as presented. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by Personnel and Finance Committee. Tim Zabel, Director of Business Services, will provide information regarding the preliminary budget.
Thank you. And so in your attachments today, you'll see the formal preliminary budget approval, which is a black and white spreadsheet. It encompasses Funds 10, 27, as well as the other funds, Fund 50, Fund 80, all of our funds that have levy implications as well. This preliminary budget is brought to the board every year in June as part of our regular budget calendar. As a reminder, we don't get our final numbers from the state for this coming year budget, even though our fiscal year starts in a couple of weeks. We don't get our final revenue figures from the state until October. So we'll meet again in October. We have the budget hearing and October board meeting to set the final levy, along with the final budget, which will include any changes that happened between last week and now. This preliminary budget that you see was brought to Personnel and Finance Committee last week, and it does assume a balanced budget. So I know that that was one of the board's goals. And the balanced budget includes some revenue assumptions, as well as some expenditure assumptions, including an increase in salaries. Now, again, this is preliminary, and these are all estimated numbers as of right now. Since the Finance Committee met last week, the Joint Finance Committee at the state level passed some motions, which changes how this might play out. Now, of course, that's not finalized, and it still has to go through approvals at the state level. But if the motions that were passed do play out as they were passed, it would change where our revenue sources would come from. Right? So we assumed in this preliminary budget that the state would increase Special Education Aid to 40%, and that that would be a sufficient cost. They kept it lower at 35%, and it's uncertain. So it's not even going to be 35%. So the increase there is less than what was assumed. On the flip side of things, though, other increases are more than what was assumed. The high-cost Special Education Aid increase is harder to estimate, but it should be more than what we expected for next year, as well as the mental health revenue. I had taken that entire amount out. And we're likely need to go down by 20%, which is helpful. And then open enrollment tuition got a big boost in those motions that were passed, and that will help us as we are net open enrollment in, so net revenue district for open enrollment tuition. So there are more things that we need to be discussing. Like I said, none of this is final at the state level. But looking at these numbers initially, I do still think that we will, hopefully, have a balanced budget in October. And it's looking like we'll be able to squeeze by with that. It's not what we expected at the state level, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to make it work. Any other questions on those, or anything I didn't speak about? There were other pieces of that motion as well. But thank you for explaining all of those moving pieces because it really is a work in progress. And then I just also want to address, so that the community understands as well, that Fund 46 deposit is in that budget. So when there was some discussion about, did we put it on for consideration? It is actually in this budget already. Yeah, the, I don't know if it's colored, but the green and red spreadsheet that's as an attachment is just a summary of changes. So $500,000 is the current Fund 46 transfer amount, and it will remain the Fund 46 transfer amount. We don't, this isn't a line item budget. I have 5,000 accounts. But these are the changes. So no change is expected at the direction of the board. One other piece that I didn't mention in my summary of those motions is the equalization rate. In those motions, there was no additional equalization aid provided, which means that any revenue limit increase as a result of a per-pupil revenue limit increase or an enrollment revenue limit increase is going to go directly to the taxpayer. So it could be offset a little bit by other pieces of that formula, which is, as you know, it's a big formula. And we kind of whittle it down to two main pieces. But there's no increase in equalization aid. Equalization aid isn't a revenue source. It's a tax levy offset source. So if there's no increase of equalization aid, and there is an increase in the revenue limit, which there is in this budget, $325 per pupil, then that will go directly to the taxpayers. So the mill rate, the levy rate, will still be determined. The equalization aid is a whole other formula. We'll get more information on that in July. And again, final numbers in October. But just for the board to be aware that, you know, our mill rate has been 650 for the past three years. We are the lowest in the county this year. But we may want to take a look at that. We may need to take a look at that as we get those final numbers in if the state really does not give an increase to that amount.
I know that I was in disagreement with removing the original line 27, the delay of the $500,000 into Fund 46 transfer unit unless additional funding is provided in the biennial budget. I think it's foolish to automatically include that $500,000 in the budget when we don't know where things are going to shake out. You know, we are short-staffed in special education. Those needs are only going to increase. Our costs in special education are only going to increase. The idea that $500,000 into Fund 46 is going to do anything to really save off the work that needs to be done on our billings. I've said it for years. You know, you are sacrificing going to CPI and other things and doing right by faculty and staff by putting money into Fund 46 that's never going to meet our needs. And we will end up having to go to referendum in the next, I would estimate, three to five years to meet those building needs because just squirreling away $500,000 or $750,000 in Fund 46 isn't going to do enough. And I'm extremely concerned that, you know, we have line item six, should I see the more recent documents? Yep, line item six says increase salaries and related benefits by 3%. Are we going to be meeting CPI?
CPI is 2.95.
Yeah. If we're, how that's going to shake out, if we are actually going to adequately fund, you know, merit pay bonuses and whatnot, those are all considerations. So I definitely would like to make a motion to replace, I guess it would ultimately become, item 28, which was the former item 27, delay the $500,000 Fund 46 transfer unless additional funding is provided in the biennial budget.
That line 28 was just, it wasn't in the, it was just an item to be discussed as a potential piece if we needed additional funds. So we discussed that there are other pieces out there, and you were going to potentially put together a list for the board to consider things if, should we need to. Should we need to. We want to meet that at least 3%. And so that was just one piece. And that was one of the issues, that it was just one piece, not the only piece. And this, again, I think is, board member Netzel mentioned, this is, I feel this gets confusing. This is just, it's not the budgets. It's just additions and subtractions. It is a total working document for us. It's just the start. It is a total working document for us, it's just the start, and it's going to change, and we know it's going to change, and a lot, you know, we're going to have a lot of discussion.
So, um. She put a second to remove the 500,000 from Fund 46.
Okay. Do I have a second to remove the, um?
Well, to add, to add former line 27 to now line 28 on the most recent, is noticed on the agenda for tonight.
Is there a second? I guess there's not a second, so that will not.
Motion, motion.
Yeah, the motion, right. Thank you.
I know, my reasoning for bringing that up is for transparency, to show the community that we are being responsible, and we're not just arbitrarily sticking money away into something that ultimately we are going to have to go to referendum for and destroying the relationships we have with our faculty and staff in the process.
On that, I guess I, you know, we have roofs, we have a lot of capital, um, structure, and really most companies, it's kind of, to me, it's the equivalent of depreciation, and I know some gets into, you know, how you report on your books, but every year our roofs are depreci, you know? We're putting aside that little chunk over the 20-year span of a roof to replace it. So it's not just frivolously putting money away, it's just taking pieces of what we know are coming up and just prudently planning for that and being, you know, responsible. So I disagree on that.
Well, my argument is yes, these things need to be replaced, and if we're going to replace them in a timely manner, we should do it, we should be doing it much more quickly than we are now with just these little investments into Fund 46, given how expensive things are to maintain, and in the processes of squirreling away this small amount of money against a lot of money that we need to do these projects, the relationships and the culture within the district is suffering because we've gone multiple years without meeting CPI, we've removed money from bonuses and other things, and my argument is this small amount of money against a larger problem is not worth it in the long run, and our scores will go down if we keep losing as many people as we are, as evidenced by the personnel report from this evening.
So I have one, um, statement and one question. Um, so I just wanted to make it clear for anyone watching that, um, at the PNF meeting, which I'm not a committee member, but I just attended as a board member, um, there is still that original, uh, like budget, preliminary budget worksheet. There was review that still has the line 27, so there was nothing done at the meeting that was hiding that away or, um, trying to conceal that from the public. Um, that's still there, and it's, as others have said, that's a working meeting. Um, so the board and administrators attending can, you know, make adjustments as they see that that's the purpose of what committees are, the working meetings and documents get updated all the time. Um, and the discussion at that meeting was that the board is committed, um, for yet another year to want to make that $500,000, um, investment into Fund 46, um, the majority of the board, um, felt that way at least, um, just that bit of a pulse that people. Um, and my question for you is, um, so I understand that the high-cost special education funding coming out of joint finance, um, was a little bit higher than expected, but that's a much smaller part of the special education funding. I just wondered, like, how, how does that impact Cedarburg, that high-cost special education funding?
So high-cost special education is a very unique, um, and niche, uh, special education source of revenue, and, um, it has much smaller appropriation, um, than 90% is nowhere near the funding that it would take to get the regular special education to 90% or even 60%, right? And the reason is because not a lot of school districts submit for this. Now Cedarburg is one of the school districts, it's one of the best school districts in the state for submitting for high-cost special education aid. We do a really good job at that, Kira actually does a really good job at that. Um, and this is one of the districts that I've been at that, that does a great job, and I've learned from that here. Um, but the reason that others don't do it is because it's really time-intensive, and, and they don't have the time or the, or the skills or the staff to be able to do that. Um, and so right now, we get a pretty good chunk of that high-cost special education. We get, this year we're getting 228,000, I think it was, that we just got. Now, I kind of did some backwards math on this and using the, the JFC motion, and if we, um, applied, uh, the, the state funding for next year to the, um, debatable costs that were submitted this year, um, in two years from now, it would be 90%, it would be closer to about 70%. And that's with just the same number of school districts that are, um, submitting. If more aid goes into this, so if this does pass, it then becomes more of a revenue stream for folks, more school districts will learn how to do this, and it will make our portion of that pot much smaller. So we can expect a little bit of a bump, and I would expect in year one to have a bump, and I was talking to my colleagues about this, um, working through my forums and then talking about, you know, Milwaukee, for one, has 10% of special education kids, they don't submit for high cost, but it would be wise for them to do that. Um, and they probably will if this goes through, like financially, right? And so they're going to start to take big chunks of that out, of that appropriation out, um, whereas that would have otherwise come to us. So I would expect that in year two, um, we'll see how year one goes, but I would expect in year two that we wouldn't get an increase, um, to the tune that you may look at if you said, oh, it's going to go to 50 and 90%, where, you know, no, I, I would expect that will stay around 20 to 30%.
Okay.
Thanks for your analysis.
I just wanted to address some earlier misinformation. So line 27 from the PNF meeting, that is not on the document that we're voting on this evening, uh, was specifically asked to be removed by our board president of delaying the 500,000 under the guise of it being confusing. Um, so it was a specific request to remove that item, and no, it does not appear on the documents that we're going to be voting on this evening, which is why it was in board docs.
I'm not sensible.
Which is why I made a point to. I don't know, do you? I expect the same treatment. That is why I made the request to put that line item back in so that the public knows that we do have the opportunity to delay that 500,000 and to be fiscally responsible based off of how the biennial budget shakes out. If it shakes out and we're able to fulfill all of our obligations elsewhere and it makes sense, then it makes sense. What I'm asking for is the option to include that.
Is the, um, when you're talking about that 500,000 line 27, that's on that sheet that just shows the additions and subtractions.
Mm-hmm.
But the actual budget, the preliminary budget, has the 500,000 dollar line item in it.
It does, but being that, that is.
I don't understand the issue.
Well, it has the line item in there, that it will absolutely be sent to Fund 46. My suggestion is we need to include language that allows us to delay that, to be responsible based off of what the biennial budget says, so that we're not putting ourselves into a bad situation.
Can I just be clear, this is a preliminary budget. So, um, let's say that the biennial budget didn't come through with these numbers, Governor vetoed it, and we're just back to square one or something. Um, in October, we'd have to make all the decisions again, and we'd go back to a, you know, line item budget, and we would be able to have that conversation again. So it, um, I won't be transferring it between July and the end of October before the board approves the final budget, um, so that if it were to be the case where the board would vote to move those funds, um, it could still happen.
And I completely understand that. Yeah, finally, I just wanted to make clear to you, this is definitely happening, this is a preliminary budget. Unfortunately, due to how budgets have shaken out before and what people have said was there and was not there, my concern is making sure that this language is extremely easy to find and can't be sheltered, that's swept away or denied in the future.
So I know there are different, um, ideas about what's fiscally responsible, and I think a lot of these discussions are great at the PNF committee meeting, and I would encourage people to, anyone in the public to come and attend and listen as we kind of work through and have these discussions. Um, at this point, I would make a motion to approve the 25, 26 preliminary budget as presented.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the 25, 26 preliminary budget. Any further discussion? If no discussion, I will take a vote, um, to approve the 25, 26 preliminary budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the, um, motion to approve the 25, 26 preliminary budget passes, counting here five to one. Thank you.
All right, the next recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025, 26 general insurance renewals as presented. Uh, this recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
I'll take a motion to approve the 25, 26 general insurance renewals. I will make the motion.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the 25, 26 general insurance renewals. Any discussion? Then all those in favor of approving the 25, 26 general insurance renewals, vote aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes six to zero. Thank you.
All right, uh, the next recommendation is for the board to approve the 2024, 25 budget revisions as presented. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the 24, 25 budget amendments.
So.
I will second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the 24, 25 budget amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes 20, the six zero, the 24, 25 budget amendments. Thank you.
All right, the next is a recommendation for the board to approve the CPAC Incorporated contract as presented. This contract is for the 2025 through 2028, and the recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
I will take a motion to approve the Cedarburg Performing Arts Center CPAC Inc. contract for the years 25 to 28.
So moves.
I will second one.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the Cedarburg Performing Arts Center CPAC Inc. contract for 25, 28, the years 25, 28. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The vote to approve the Cedarburg Performing Arts CPAC Inc. contract for the years 25 to 28 passes six to zero. Thank you.
All right, this next recommendation is for the board to approve teacher and administrator contracts extended to the best candidates to fill vacancies full of the summer. Approving contracts proactively during the summer puts the district in the best position to secure quality veteran educators. All contracts will be presented to the board at the board meeting following contract acceptance. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
I would make a motion to approve the teacher administrator contracts to replace teachers and administrators who resign over the summer.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, um, approve the teacher and administrator contracts to replace teachers and administrators who resign over the summer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion to approve the teacher and administrator contracts to replace teacher administrators who resign over the summer passes six to zero. Thank you.
All right, the next recommendation is for the board to approve the proposed revisions to the 2025, 26 Support and Exempt Staff Handbook as presented. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Personnel and Finance Committee.
I will make a motion to approve the Support and Exempt Staff Handbook revisions.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Support and Exempt Staff Handbook revisions. All those in, um, all those in approval, vote aye. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? It is approved to, um, make the changes regarding the Support and Exempt Staff Handbook changes, um, six to zero. Thank you.
All right, now finally getting away from Personnel and Finance Committee, this next one is from the Curriculum Committee. Uh, so the next recommendation is for the board to approve the French-American Exchange Program and CHS Travel to France in March of 2026 as presented. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Curriculum Committee.
I would motion to approve the CHS French-American Exchange Program.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CHS French-American Exchange Program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is, it passes to approve the CHS French-American Exchange Program six to zero. Thank you.
All right, the next set is for the board to approve donations. We've got quite a few donations. Again, uh, this is one of the things that I think sets Cedarburg apart from many communities is the support we get. So, uh, here we go. Uh, first, uh, donation is, uh, production equipment valued at $4,630 from the former company, K Nation Equipment. This donation will be used to support the Cedarburg Performing Arts Center. Uh, then we have equipment and labor valued at $3,800 by Joe Cassandra for the removal of the Parkview Elementary Playground. We also have equipment and labor valued at $2,500 from Lawn Scapers for the removal of the Park View Elementary Playground. And we have an $8,500 donation from All My Friends Incorporated to support a sensory room at Thorson Elementary School. And then $17,656.14 from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to support cardiovascular fitness equipment for Webster Middle School. And then $3,500 from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to support life skills training for CHS's 18 to 20-year-old special education students. And then finally, $3,000 from the Cedarburg Education Foundation to support CSC's 4K students through a 4K motor lab. The board makes all these approval, uh, approves all these donations. The total donations for this month will be $43,586.14. And then since this is the last month of the year, that would give us a total donation of $379,423.80 for the year.
Very impressive. Do I have a motion to approve the donations made to the district for this month?
I would make a motion to approve these donations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the donations made to the district in June of 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The vote passes six zero to approve the donations made to the district in June of 2025. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our recommendation portion of the meeting.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to the committee delegate representative and liaison reports, um, board member Charlene. She, last year was the CISA representative for the Cedarburg School District, and they had a meeting on May 20th, so she went to that meeting, and she's going to give us a summer, summer report of what happened. And then on May 21st, board member, um, Erickson has replaced her as the CISA One, um, representative, so I'm sure we'll be hearing in the future from board member Erickson, so thank you.
Yeah, so on Tuesday, uh, the 20th, I attended the CISA One Annual Convention, um, at the CISA One office in Peewaqui. Um, it was about an hour long. We heard an update from the CISA One Executive Director, Sue Doyle, uh, who gave an overview of the different services, um, that they offer. So they offer a lot of, um, you know, therapy type services that districts can, uh, contracted them with amongst other things. Uh, she went over some workshops that they offer and highlighted a job fair, uh, that they hosted at their CISA One office. And then the second part of that meeting was to elect members of the CISA One Board of Control. Um, so there were two at-large vacancies that were filled, and then, um, a vacancy in Group B, so they group the school districts, eight or nine, um, total in each group, uh, Cedarburg is in Group A, so there was no potential vacancy for our group, but there was one in Group B. Uh, and those people, uh, meet monthly who are on that CISA One Board of Control, and that was the meeting. Thank you.
And now, do you want to give us an update on the Curriculum Committee meeting that was held Sunday fourth?
Yes, so we met June 4th. Um, again, the meetings are always open, you meet in the boardroom most months, and there's, uh, lots of documents on board docs for additional information on the three topics that we discussed. Um, first up, we talked about that French-American Exchange Program that we voted on previously this evening, so that will be a trip to France for Cedarburg, um, high school students, uh, who are in the French program, uh, in March of 2026, primarily over spring break, and then likely the French students coming here in October of 2025. I know previously we've had the German gap program present here at the board meeting, and this is similar to that, and this, uh, exchanges happened, uh, years back, uh, I think, oh, later, prior, like 2020 and prior, um, so this is great that it's getting started again. Um, we next went over the Webster Middle School Home Room Resource Update, and, uh, we had some people that have been in the committee, um, reviewing, uh, curriculum to meet some PBIS, uh, goals and standards, and this group recommended the Leader in Need Curriculum, and they said it had a stronger focus on responsibility habits. Uh, we also talked about how it offered some additional lessons in executive functioning that, um, Character Strong, um, may not have, and we have logins as board members. Um, I have paper copies of some of it, if anybody wants to borrow my paper copies to look at, um, feel free to reach out. And, uh, expense of the estimated expense would be $11.25 per student plus an additional workbook fee if the paper workbook was used, um, and there is a grant available for, I think up to three years. Um, so we're reviewing it, any board member can review, ask questions to direct to Ally, and we will bring that up again at our next curriculum meeting. Um, but next, we talked about, uh, the Spring I-Ready Review, and Ally gave a really great presentation on that, um, which is the K through 8 standardized testing. Um, and included in that were the district benchmarks of 66 percentile for English, 78 percentile for math, uh, and those are, have been identified as the Cedarburg District benchmarks, um, that will be tracked every time the I-Ready results are released, and, uh, Dr. Clark has identified those as the percentiles where a student can be successful in a college-level course, uh, for math or English. Um, and we next meet on July 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member, Netso, would you like to give us an update for the PNF committee?
Committee, so PNF met on June 11th, and everything that we talked about at that meeting, we actually voted on tonight. So we went over the budget revisions, the general insurance renewals, the 25, 26 preliminary budget, the Support and Exempt Staff Handbook, teacher and administrator contracts, uh, who resigned over the summer, and also the CPAC contract. Uh, we will meet again on September 10th, and I'm sure we will have a lot of updates to that preliminary budget. So I would encourage people in the committee to please attend and, um, listen to all the discussion that we have around these topics.
Thank you, yes, we have very robust committee meetings. So we are going to go into executive session, and I want to make sure we're going to do a roll call, and I read this highlighted portion first, right? Okay. So we are going into an executive session to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive for bargaining reasons pursuant to 1985-1E of the Wisconsin statutes. We'll also consider stra, okay, so consider strategy planning regarding upcoming negotiations with Cedarburg Education Association. And then we are also going to consider employment promotional com, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to 1985-1C of the Wisconsin statutes. And so we will be considering early retirement, retirement offering for a specific staff member, and we will be considering the superintendent's annual evaluation. We will then reconvene into open session. It is anticipated the board may reconvene. We will then reconvene into open session, it is anticipated the board may reconvene into open session and may take action on one or more of the executive session items. And we'll also be approving the executive session minutes from March nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. So I will make a motion, a roll call vote, I guess, I don't need a motion, right? Okay, a roll call vote to move into executive session. So, um, Mr. Salagio?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Charlene?
Aye.
Yes, Netso?
Aye.
Mr. Demchuk?
Aye.
Ms. Erickson?
Aye.
And Laura Strobel is yes, so we will reconvene or move into executive session with a vote of five to one, thank you. You take your.